The Blue Lake City Council meeting, today is October 28th, please stand for the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Manager Duffy, please establish a quorum.
Councilmember Napier?
Here.
Councilmember Louis Lusso?
Here.
Councilmember Swatsky?
Here.
Councilmember Scipani?
Here.
Councilmember Bales?
Here.
Great. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Yes.
I had a request earlier, but to reorder something, but the person who requested it is not here.
We have an update.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Can you restate the motion, I'm sorry?
To affirm the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
And who made the motion?
Napier.
Napier, seconded by Louis Lusso?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. All right, moving on to public comment on non-agendized items. The public is invited to present positions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake. That is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To ensure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Would the public like to speak? And Adeline, I know that you brought this in, we generally don't read these during correspondence, so if you'd like to read that during your public comment, you're welcome. Okay, I'm just saying that when it comes to correspondence, we, yes, go ahead.
Her letter is in response to correspondence that council receives, so I would suggest that you take it in the context of the prior correspondence was, I think, is in 12C? 12?
Okay, so what, so when we get to 12D, then we will read this?
Yeah, 12C, yeah. Then I would.
You don't have to read it.
You don't have to read it, but you can accept that as part of that.
She's requesting that we read it, so I just wanted to make sure that if she did want it read in the record. Okay, great. All right, moving on to public comment, continue with public comment. Who would like to comment? Adeline, go ahead.
Good evening, Adeline Jones. First of all, I want to honor the memory of longtime Blue Laker Merritt Lundgren, who passed away this month. Many know him as a hard-working member of the Old Crows and saw him walking his dog Odin around Blue Lake. The last time I saw Merritt, he was standing at this podium, along with many other citizens of Blue Lake last spring. He advocated for our wonderful manager, Mandy Mager, to keep her here. Merritt literally cried that evening, but the council didn't listen to him or the others, and here we are. One concern I have is our five commissions: Arts and Heritage, Economic Development, Parks and Rec, Public Safety, and Planning Commission. The concern I have is I see we have a commissioner that left again, councilperson, former councilperson Elizabeth DeKay, off of Arts and Heritage. But what I'm concerned about is that commissioners now have to take their own minutes. And in the Public Safety Commission, Alex Rikka told me the last time that he took the minutes, it was very difficult to make decisions as a commission and then take the minutes. When Mandy Mager was our manager, she would often attend these meetings and would take our minutes. But interim manager Duffy has constraints on her time with us. I have a solution: pay for a secretary for the other four commissions. Planning has their own secretary. Twenty dollars an hour, meetings are about two hours, an extra hour for transcribing the minutes. Total three hours times twenty dollars each equals sixty dollars a month per meeting, times four commissions equals two hundred and forty dollars a month. If every councilperson donated their fifty dollar a month stipend to this, we'd have it covered. As many know, as mayor, I donated my monthly stipend back to the city, to the Parks and Rec Director, Department. Finally, some good news. There is an organization in town that is thriving. It's the Blue Lake Chamber of Commerce. At our last meeting, we appointed two new directors to our board for a total now of eight directors. We can have as many as nine. In my forty-five years with the chamber, it's been a while since we've had this many. Congratulations goes to our wonderful President, Justin Goode, for his excellent leadership. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other public comments?
Hello, you guys. My name's Don Bednar. Most of you guys know me. I've lived out here on the corner of A and Broad Street for over twenty years. I see a lot of things happening in Blue Lake, and I'm gonna make my statement and then go home. Not that I don't care about the rest of the issues in Blue Lake, but the World Series is going on. Really, a lot of people, locals too, speeding down that road.
Meeting started, but Zoom has no video or audio.
What? You don't need to see me, you just listen. Is it rectified?
It is, thank you.
I'll give you a couple, give you thirty more seconds, go ahead.
Okay. Give me thirty more seconds, or?
No, I added thirty seconds.
Oh, okay. I just want to have a speed bump put in across the street from my place. I hustled around, I talked to almost all the neighbors in our immediate neighborhood for a block or two. Everyone from Vernuku to next door, and the Dairs, Cash and Melissa, they're all for it, too. Having a speed bump put on A Street. You go up here, if you don't recall where A Street is, you turn at the church. Go up two blocks, there's a stop sign in it where it crosses with Broad Street. And people, they get busy, I know, and they're not paying attention, or they're on their phones or whatever. They just motor through there, and there's constantly kids going to in front of the school. When the weather, it gets bad, it gets even worse, okay? When we had peace officers here before Gunderson, they'd always put a peace officer in front of the school in the morning to protect the kids with all the traffic and all the crazy stuff. We don't have that anymore. Speed bumps have kind of become our mainstay to keep the traffic flow, whatever culpable. So, that's all. I already talked to Alex a couple times regarding this, and I thought he was head of the Safety Committee. And when he told me, "We only put in one speed bump per block," I said, "There aren't any around our blocks at all." And so he told me to come here and address you guys, and maybe we could get it started. My back's wimpy, but I got a couple sons that would help them put that thing in, and the city needs help doing it. And that's it. That's all I really got. It's recessive, when you get to the stop sign there on A and Broad, bring it back like thirty, forty feet, and that'll stop traffic going both directions on that street there, and it'll save some kids' lives, and all, plus pedestrians, too, cats, dogs. That's all. I don't know how much financially it's gonna cost the city, but, like I said, I could get a couple of my son's funds to help put it in. Let me know, or what else do I gotta do, Kent, or John?
Let's keep it, we'll keep it to John. That being said, I'd also go ahead and attend the Safety Commission meeting and see if they, if you can bring it forward to them. Adeline, what's your next meeting?
Our next meeting is Monday at seven o'clock, and speed bumps around town is on the agenda.
Okay, great. So Monday, seven o'clock, where do I go? Here?
Here.
Okay, I'll be here.
Great.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, go Boojes.
Any further public comments? Julie Christie, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm here. I had to turn the bike off. I've got my niece helping me do forum chores. So thank you again, staff, and everybody supporting Zoom, and everybody that showed up tonight in-house. Really thank you guys for being there as well. We've gone through a lot in the last decade that it's unfortunate, and a lot of it gets kind of portrayed in the public in a very false narrative, that if you actually were involved, there's a lot of stuff that we really have to move forward and rectify, and it's gonna not be easy. So I'd really like, but I support our council. You guys are amazing. I don't know all of you personally in any way, but just your actions during the meetings. I, it's such a breath of fresh air, it's unbelievable, and I just feel like we really have a lot of economic and infrastructure that we really need to work on that has been neglected, and in a way that we need to have all facets working at once. The community input, the commissions, the council, all of us, the wheel's been broken for a while, and as far as the recall goes, it really saddens me because the narrative being used against our council now is, in fact, exactly everything that we had been dealing with for years. And so it's really a slap in the face to finally have a crew in there that is looking through the books, looking through the history, getting stuff on the table as time allows. And yet, we're getting this rhetoric, so just, I just really applaud everybody stepping up. I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional about it, because it's been a lot of years of trying to finally have this moment that we can all move forward together. And I really still think we should have a commission kind of workshop day that would help promote more community members coming in, giving thoughts and opinions at each commission table at Prash or something. It might help us revenue, like more commissioners. So anything we can do to get back to our roots of communicating together, planning together, and it's gonna really make this town blossom and bounce back, and we need a big bounce back. So thank you, everyone that's sticking in there right now. We really appreciate and need you all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Last call for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. We are moving on to item number four, the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions about the consent agenda? We're looking at the minutes.
Yes. I'd like to pull everything.
Everything?
Yeah, sorry.
Do we need a motion to pull all the items from the consent agenda, or just go through each one?
You can just click it up.
Okay, all right, moving on to item four A, council member, or council minutes from August 26th. What do you got?
I got a couple, couple corrections.
I'm gonna have you speak up a little louder.
A few corrections from the 26th.
Okay.
On line number ninety-five.
Give us a page.
Page five. There's a misspelling in line number ninety-five of my name.
Gotcha.
And the, and the title as well.
In the title as well.
Mayor Proms Kapani.
I gotcha.
Not to be vain, but, anyway, and then on line ninety-eight, it says RCA, which I believe is supposed to be RCEA.
Gotcha.
Somewhere I saw Humboldt County.
That's another.
I haven't gotten there yet, okay. On line number one twenty-eight on the next page, it says, "Public Comment Received," it says Paradise K. There was no such comment, and Paradise K is a business name. So I'm not sure how that got in there.
Just random.
Okay.
Right, you see it? So it's a public comment received, Paradise K.
And then around line one fifty-one on page seven, so I realize this is a new style of minutes that we're using. But in a couple instances, we've had, we've had speakers address the council on, for various items, and I was wondering if we could add the name of the speaker. And in this case, it was Juan Pablo Servantes. Juan Pablo Servantes, the Humboldt County Clerk. On line. Line one eighty-two is where it says Humboldt, rather than Humboldt.
Oh, it should be Humboldt, not Humble. Yeah.
Yeah, that comes over from the transcripts. Sometimes I catch it.
The next line, at the end, I was wondering, when we, we created an ad hoc committee in this motion, but it doesn't name who, it doesn't state who the ad hoc committee members were. So I wonder if that's something that we could add, for just the sake of clarity and the record. And, and the names.
Okay, yeah, so this is going to be of Napier. Yeah, under eighty-three, it should be ad hoc committee comprised of Napier and Bales to assist.
I'm sorry, what page, what page does this, please?
Page eight.
On line two oh seven, again, there was a speaker that addressed the council, so I'd wonder if we could note that, and the speaker's name was Ted.
Sorry, you're, we're.
The speaker that addressed the council for that topic was Ted Hales, so.
Okay.
I wonder if we could notate the speaker's name.
So it was, it's missing.
Yes, correct. It just seems like on the first page, we have all the staff and council members present, but then when we have particular speakers in for particular items, I think it's kind of, it's a little confusing to not have their names mentioned. And that's all I have for that meeting. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else before we move on to the next minute?
Something further down. In that same agenda? No, not on four A, okay. Do you want to take them up one by one?
If that's okay, yeah, cleaner. Can we get a motion to? Do you need direction? We can just direct you, we don't have to make a motion to, to, for those, do you correct?
I think it would be good to make a motion to move this forward with the corrections identified.
Great.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Scipani, seconded by Louis Lusso. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, minutes have been submitted. Moving on to the next set of minutes, which are minutes from September ninth, 2025. What corrections do we have on that?
I have one, page twelve, line one oh three.
Line one oh three?
Line one oh three, I think it's the spelling of the last name Course.
It's not page twelve.
Sorry, that's actually page thirteen.
Thirteen, okay, sorry.
Okay, wait a minute.
These are not the readers.
Okay.
C O R S E.
C O R S E. For Brian Course and Jennifer Course, and then Julie Christie, I believe, it ends with T I E.
Okay.
I have, oh, sorry, for you.
That's all I had on that page.
On page eleven, line twenty-six, twenty-seven, we had guest speakers for that, we had a guest speaker for that topic, and that was Nicole Goldbach, the Humboldt County Elections Manager.
And what line was that?
It would be twenty-seven.
And that's in the nine, nine minutes?
Correct, correct, yes. And her, her last name is spelled G O L D B A C H.
Can you spell that again?
G O L D B A C H.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further corrections on that page? Anyone have any further corrections on this set of minutes? No?
One, one other item to this one, which was on page sixteen. Go ahead and have the motion to adjourn. There was a report out at eleven twenty PM of September ninth, and no final action was taken. Of course, nobody was here, so. It was a very silent room.
Can we get a motion to approve these amended minutes?
Close that one.
So moved.
We have a motion by Napier?
Second.
Second by Scipani. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. Forgot to ask, do the public have any amendments they'd like to see these minutes? Great. All right, moving on to the next set of minutes, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Page nineteen, line seventy-seven, we had speakers from Redwood Coast Energy Authority, Beth Burks, the executive director, and I can't remember if Richard Engel spoke.
Richard Engel.
Okay, so Richard Engel, and I don't recall his title at the moment, I'm sorry, but I could look it up and get, get it to you.
Okay.
Same page, nineteen, line eighty-eight, same last name, Brian Course.
Got it.
Thanks.
Any further amendments?
That's all I got. Oh, well. No, sorry, that's it.
And Jill, do we not make, do we not finalize our vote on the last set of minutes, or do we finalize our vote?
We finalize.
Thank you.
We, we did have a speaker for item number five, which is line forty-nine.
Page?
On page eighteen.
Proclamation, yes.
Yes.
It was Sam Green, Samantha. And she was with Humboldt Domestic Violence Services.
Any other changes?
Yes, for four C.
For C, yes.
Page twenty-three, line one seventy-seven, last word should be the acronym RHNA in place of Arena.
Nice catch.
You said that was line seventy-seven?
One seventy-seven.
One seventy-seven, thank you.
Any further amendments?
I would ask that on page twenty-two, around line fifty-four, for city clerk job description, that there be some description of the presentation from the ad hoc committee, Napier and Louis Lusso, regarding the city clerk position, job description. And then the rest would follow.
Any further amendments? Does the public have any amendments? And four C? Seeing none?
And then there's also just a duplication of those minutes in the next three or four pages.
Yeah, I felt like I saw something. I got rid of one of them. It's when I'm building the thing, sorry. I have to build it at home, and then I print them out here. Never the twain shall meet.
And as a, I'm not sure if it would be addressed here, but in the minutes, we do talk about the April twenty-second minutes that still have not been presented.
Those are still being worked on. I confirmed that with Laura, that those, we were hoping that that would be at this meeting, but not quite. So those are still outstanding, and we are tracking those.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Can we get a motion to approve item four C?
So moved.
A motion by Bales?
Second.
Second by Scipani. All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All of the opposed?
As amended, is that correct?
Yes, apologies.
Public comments?
Does the public have comment on those minutes? I did ask earlier, but. Seeing none. Moving on to item four D. Monthly disbursement for period September first through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Does anyone have any amendments or questions for staff?
I have a question, and it's on page thirty-four, check number one three three zero four.
I'm sorry. I've got, I don't have a page number on mine, I've got.
It's the last, it's the second to last check on the list.
Second to last check for fifty-nine thousand?
That's the one.
That's the one.
So I was wondering if you could tell us if that check is being paid out of grant funds that have already been received, or grant funds that are expected to be received?
This will be grant funds that will be received, so this was actually for work that was done back in March, and it was a few weeks ago, Vicki was going back through all of that particular grant in order just to make sure that everything was addressed, and she found that we were missing one invoice from SHN from back in March. So she got that one that has been paid. Now SHN is going to be able to complete the packet for submittal so that the city can then get reimbursed. So it's basically, we pay it out, we get reimbursed on the backend.
And we know that that grant is still.
Yes, we are, yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
While we're on that page, if I can jump in, that last page, item one three two nine nine. So we had a water operator's exam fee, is that for water or sewer, and did he pass?
This, so he has not, the, the exam is coming up in the next month, so he had to pay the check first, so it is pending. That has been part of the policy of the city to pay the, the exam fee in advance, and until such time that people pass. It's part of your policy, right, wrong, or indifferent?
Is that a written policy, or that's just established?
Probably been more of a practice.
Okay. Not to get too far off track, but what would be, to sketch out the process for council to amend that, to make a change to that policy and formalize it?
It would actually be really good for your next city manager to bring forward an entire revision of your personnel policy. A lot of it is outdated, it does not conform with current employment or even Affordable Health Care Act requirements.
Thank you.
Great. Further questions about the statements? Financials? Seeing none, all been up to the public for comment or questions? Does anyone have any questions about the checks received and or utilized by the state? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for approval of item four D.
So moved.
Motion by Scipani?
Second.
Seconded by Louis Lusso. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Moving on to item number five, received presentation from Humboldt County Division of Health, rabies awareness, information only. Mr. Dolph, please come forward. Yes, please.
So information only, I'm not able to take questions.
Well, you can, you can take questions, yes, sorry.
Oh, okay, great.
Are you telling us you can, or are you?
I would love to take questions.
You've got his presentation ready.
My name's Ben Dolph, I'm supervisor of the Consumer Protection Program with the Humboldt County Division of Environmental Health, and we're most famous for just being the health inspectors for the county, but one of the many programs we facilitate is rabies surveillance and investigation. And we work closely with the Humboldt County Public Health Lab, who does the rabies analysis and testing, and also the Public Health Communicable Disease Nursing Team, who provide guidance and response to potential and positive human impacts. I do have a brief power point, is that?
And we are having some difficulty locating it at the moment. Jill, just give me half a moment. Can you chit chat about other things for a second?
I don't know, I've been publicized a little bit. There's other things that I don't want to talk about right now.
Yeah, so let's see here, we don't want, we don't want that one, I want to get, I want to get different.
I guess I'll just ask while we wait. How many positive cases have we had in Blue Lake, confirmed?
Two confirmed, and the sheriff's office has responded to three suspect.
Okay.
Skunks.
Okay, all been skunks?
Yes. Countywide, this year, we've had a total of six. We had three bats from Arcata, and the two skunks here, and then one fox recently from Ferndale area. That was a great time for questions.
Is that typical for this time of the year?
It fluctuates. I do have a graph that kind of shows. I've been overseeing this program for five years. We've had eight total in my experience, including the six this year. By and large, it's almost, it's been a lot of zeros, and that's to say we test probably forty to fifty animals each year. And there are a lot of other illnesses that affect wildlife that are, that cause neurological disorders. And those are also potentially rabies, so we do select testing when there's been a domestic animal or potential human exposure in those cases. But distemper is a common one. We get a lot of calls for sick and ill skunks or scavengers. They get into everything. And yeah, they're one of the more common ones. But the one that might be surprising is bats. We do probably more bats than anything else. And bats are actually also responsible for the most incidence of human illness and human exposure maybe. Because they're a known carrier, they'll get in your house. If you're sleeping, it lands in your bed, you drape your arm over it, you probably won't even know you're getting bats. They're so small. So bats are probably our most common tested animal. And yeah, like you said, this year we had three. In the last five I've been doing, we haven't had any. So it's just kind of a nice reminder, because I know my cat needs to get up on the roof and catch bats. I didn't think twice about it, so.
Your presentation's ready.
Okay, perfect. There's my vicious dog right there, perfect example. Next slide, please. So, a little about the virus. It's family root of Virago today. And it's been around for a loo, a long time. I mean, it's been around for ages. Vaccine was developed shortly after World War Two and has been proven widely successful. It affects, it can affect potentially any, any mammal. Like dogs, cats, bats, rats, skunks. As it says there, we do get positive tests for cattle, hence the photo there. And it has specific reservoirs where the bat population has a, has a specific type that li, lives within the bat population. Or locally, we have bats and skunk variants. And that typically means that when it lives in a particular reservoir population, it has a lower mortality but a higher morbidity. Meaning it's more easily transmitted within that population, but less likely to cause sudden death. So it has an opportunity to basically thrive within that reservoir species. But when it crosses over into another animal that's not that species, typically it will, it's considered a dead-end host because the onset, or at least the symptom and transmissibility to the point of death is so quick that it doesn't necessarily circulate within that other animal population. And it is, it's practically a hundred percent lethal if it goes untreated and uncaught. By the time a person would become symptomatic, it is too late to really administer treatment. Next slide, please. Oh, good, I got that one in there. This is how rabies is transmitted. It starts with an animal bite. And rather than traveling through the bloodstream, it travels through the nervous system. So the onset period can be a matter of days to months up to a year. Because it travels slowly through the, through the nervous system. And it's also a function of, was it on an extremity? Does it have a long ways to go to get to the brain? Was it a minor bite, minor scratch with a small virus load being infected? Or was it more severe? So it has a function of the virus loading and where it is on the body. And then through that nervous system, through the nerves, it'll travel up into the spinal cord. And then from there, it moves a bit more rapidly into, into the brain. And that's when you start developing the symptoms. And the symptoms start with, you know, minor behavioral change. It's called the prodromal period. And may or may not be noticeable. Second is the more noticeable or the excitatory phase, we're considered furious rabies. When it, animals do show aggression. People who have, in my office, who have seen actual live rabbit animals said they're attacking car tires, a fox is trying to kill a rock. Like it is bizarre and normal and apparent. And then the last phase, which is, can also be kind of problematic, is called the paralytic or dumb phase. Because one of the things that rabies can do to wild animals is make them act tame, make them act docile. Make them want to approach you, make them, you know, look pettable, or you want to help them. And that's when a lot of potential human exposures occur. Next slide. So here's a local, here's a graph of Humboldt County's rabies positive tested animals from nineteen ninety to present. As you can see, two big spikes. We had a very big year and a couple times. And it's kind of a six to eight year cycle when we started getting spikes. It definitely follows the wild animal population, which is cyclical, and rabies is kind of a control mechanism naturally. Interestingly, in, and some of you might remember this, in two thousand nine, where there was a large spike, it had, there was a large number of foxes. That was predominantly foxes, a lot of them around the Jacoby Creek area. There were incidents where children at Jacoby Creek School were exposed. And that was a unique instance that warranted a study conducted by the California Department of Public Health and the Lawrence Livermore Laboratory. Because they were studying the interaction between the reservoirs and the host species and identifying that their skunk variant had a small mutation that temporarily translated into the fox population. So the foxes then became a reservoir for a period of time. Pretty real, but interesting. Next slide, please. Here are all of the animal species involved in that graph. So predominantly foxes, hundred and ten foxes, seventy-seven skunks, thirty-five, if I'm reading that right, yeah, thirty-five bats, ten cats. Cats are typically the most common domestic animal to have rabies because there, unlike dogs, there is not a mandatory vaccination practice or licensing cats. And then seven cows. And that's all my slides, but I think the most important takeaways are really avoid contact with wildlife. Be conscious if you have a bat in your room in your house, we are happy to test. There's no charge for our testing. We'll take, if there's any potential risk for human exposure, we will absolutely test. We'll come up, we'll facilitate euthanasia if necessary to the Humboldt Wildlife Care Center, who is great about responding to injured or ill animals, and they're very well adapted to potentially rabid animals. And vaccinate your pets. That is the best way to keep rabies out of your own home is to make sure your pets are current on rabies vaccination. And it also impacts response if there's been an exposure. If an animal has not been vaccinated and has a potential exposure with wildlife, or a known exposure with wildlife, that's a six-month quarantine. So your animal has to be isolated from other animals, other people for a six-month period. If, if the animal is current on its vaccine, that's reduced to thirty days. And then as far as the human exposure, if a, if a dog is known or a cat is known to be current on its vaccine, the quarantine period is as low as ten days.
So one is, is an animal suspect, how do we call?
You could start with our office.
And what's that number, what, I mean?
Yeah, I have, I have.
Sorry, I didn't. There's a note. Okay.
Oh, perfect.
He was supposed to get her, get her soliton boy to do in various other areas.
We'll open it up for, we'll let the public speak first. Does anyone else have questions?
Oh, we'll let them work. What you're calling with?
You have, yeah, yeah, it's, it's in there, in, in the general office. The general office is better than my direct line, just because we have several people who are familiar with the response. And yeah, we'll make sure that it's covered.
I have a question.
What would be your perspective on people within the community feeding wild animals?
They're cute, but you shouldn't. It's tough. I remember when I was, I drove through and thinking about rabies, you guys grow beautiful apples out here. You got, no wonder you got skunks and critters and stuff. Everybody, apples in everybody's yard. But yeah, you shouldn't feed wildlife. It's, it's a food source. It promotes their contact with humans. It'll make them less wary of people. So yeah, it just definitely increases the risk of exposure and contact between people and wildlife.
Yeah, I think we got a good opportunity here. We got a good, everybody from demographics of the city. If anybody is feeding skunks to their neighbor and they think it's cute, like we probably need to stop. So just pass that along to your neighbors, friends, family, like.
Or feed your crows.
Yeah, I mean, take your cat food up, up at night.
Exactly, there are some ways.
Purposely feed the skunks because they're cute. They are cute, but they belong up Maple Creek.
Somebody say crows, what about crows?
Crows aren't susceptible to rabies, but there's concerns about West Nile virus. We haven't had any instances locally. But yeah, they're orbit and they're loud. I don't know, it's probably personally. And yeah, my little dog got skunk Sunday night. It's just unpleasant to have him around town. Yes.
I have a question about bats.
Yeah.
I live next to Fresh Hall and there's a lot of bats in my yard. So if I go out at dusk or dawn, I'll mostly at dusk there. You know, and I, and I have two cats. But sometimes like when I'm walking out, in the evening, you know, for a walk, and I'll come back and I'm coming to my door and there. And I just wonder, sometimes I think, oh, what if one got caught in my hair or? So what, what's the bats to humans type interaction likelihood? Because I don't know, I'm not vetting.
Yeah, I, um, I know it's interesting that people aren't, but if you come in with contact with the bat, you can call our office. We will test it just for that hundred percent certainty.
Test the bat?
Yes.
But what if I don't catch the bat? I mean, this is.
Then we would refer you to your, our Community Communicable Disease Nursing Team. I mean, we're not trained medical professionals. We'll handle the animal, but we let the trained professionals handle the medical advice.
Okay, so call you and say, this happened, and then we.
Yeah.
Get that one to, or somebody.
Yeah, and most, the most often call we have for bats is I found one in my house or I found it in my bedroom, and we will just test out of precaution. Yeah, we will, we will respond directly to animals that have already been deceased. We refer live critters to Humboldt Wildlife Care Center, who works closely with us to help for or facilitate euthanasia. And get the testing completed.
Anyone on Zoom wish to ask a question? All right, let's go ahead and bring it to council for questions.
It looks like Julie's.
Julie, go ahead.
Yeah, John, thank you. Not so much a question, but just like reinforcing the statements that were given by a presenter. Like there's a lot of other stuff that's like cruising around these wild animals, like distemper and parvo and lepto and west Nile that really just our community and, and the bear influx that we have too, coming in and doing, you know, getting really desensitized to being around humans. So, you know, just really practicing good stewardship of our, you know, chicken feed, cat food, dog food, our garbage. Just anything that's an attractant. And to keep our community aware, we've got our two ninety-nine community watch page. Like, there's a few pages for Blue Lake that if somebody obviously immediately get ahold of the health department. If somebody sees an animal that's exhibiting like unnatural characteristics, but to also inform the community. Because in my opinion, as a farmer and outdoors woman my entire life, like three cases in Blue Lake was, in the timeframe and the zoning was very alarming to me. So I do appreciate the manager bringing this to our attention. I appreciate the, the health department being in here tonight and having this discussion because I do understand this comes in waves, sometimes given certain environmental factors. But as fish and game is concerned, if you trap, like say, a fox in your chicken coop, they literally, if you give it to them, they're going to go dispatch that animal because of all the different pathogens that they can potentially carry. So it is something that, you know, if you actually want to save their life, don't feed them and don't give them stuff that's going to attract them to then, and, and become a nuisance. So you're actually helping them out by not helping them out, is what I'm saying. So thank you and keep in touch with everybody if we do have any issues with this, because it is kind of a little sketchy and alarming to me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, let's bring it back to council.
Yeah.
Kat, do you have a question?
So if you had a bat population and you were to test it like random sample survey, would it be likely if there was rabies present that it would be detected? Or, or a population of bats, some could have it, some could not?
I honestly don't know statistically, if you grab a hundred bats, how many would likely have rabies? I mean, we don't really do surveillance because there's only one way to test an animal if it has rabies. And that's to physically examine its brain matter. So they don't usually do that.
Okay. I think you answered my question, but if you were to find, let's say, a dead bat, you don't know, like, how or why, would you recommend calling here to have somebody pick it up to do a test or?
Not necessarily.
Okay, great.
Unfortunately, an unfunded program, so we do limit it to when there's been a potential exposure primarily. Or if there's a uptick, we might do a little bit more random sampling. I think two of the bats that came from Humboldt Wildlife Care Center, they called us. There hadn't been any direct human exposure. But they noted that they were unusually aggressive. So we were kind of like, hey, let's.
I see.
Check those out, and they turned out to be positive.
Okay, thank you.
Would you recommend any handling techniques if you do find a dead wild animal? What, what?
Love, rabies is only transmissible to contact with mucus and getting it below your skin into your, you know, contact with your nervous system. Yeah, saliva, mucus membranes, and brain matter. But it would need to penetrate the skin, but you would want to be cautious if you have a hangnail. I mean, there's always that potential where just a small break in the skin could potentially be infectious. So you're going to use gloves or, you know, contact somebody. But when we, we get a lot of calls, I found a dead skunk in my yard. It's like, well, okay, put on gloves, don't touch its mouth, and bag it up. And it is legally disposed of them in garbage, or we recommend burying two feet underground.
Any questions? Um, I have, you have a question?
I was just going to say, this is a good reminder, the rabies awareness reminder that's in our packet. And I'm wondering if that can be posted to our website or other places?
Been posted to the website. It's also been posted around town. We did that two weeks ago. Is that about right? When we were having a lot of back and forth, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
If you ever have a hotspot that starts occurring in Humboldt County, do you ever like, could we ever set up like a rabies vaccination booth for, for pets that haven't been vaccinated? Because sometimes it's hard to get in there once the, you're aware that it's.
You know, potentially, I mean, the vaccination clinics are coordinated by the vets.
Okay.
The Humboldt Delnor Veterinary Association did hold four vaccination events during the summer, and they typically do them during the summer.
Okay.
So those who have passed, but when they are announced, we help with broadcasting them to leader releases. And they issue newsletters typically too.
Great, thank you.
And I do, I do want to note that earlier in the summer, you did have an increase. And so the department went through, did a number of press releases and announcements, you know, trying to encourage people to do that. Because there were a couple of other incidents, you know, here in Blue Lake. That's why we asked if Ben could come out and give another presentation. Even though the department kind of felt like, well, we've already done the awareness part, but we thought this would be a good opportunity to bring them in, to present to council and again, elevate that awareness level, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we're always able, willing to do that.
Last call for questions, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just said we enjoy it.
Last call for questions? Thank you very much for coming.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number six, schedule a special media, schedule a special city council meeting. City staff, would you like to fill us in on this, or is it pretty self-explanatory?
Yeah, at the time that I was putting together this agenda item, in particular for agenda item number seven and then later for the, the fiscal year budget, we were still waiting for information to come forth. And I figured, we'll just have a little safety net. If I didn't need this agenda item, then I would dispense with it. But we do need to have this meeting, so I'm looking to have all of you pull up your calendars so we can discuss when we can have a secondary agenda item. Or, excuse me, a secondary meeting with council. We have a few different items in addition to the couple that will need to get continued to those meetings. I am aware that one council member is, is expected to be out of town, so we might need to work around that. I'd also look to Ryan as to her ability to attend via teleconference. I'm a little unclear about some of what are the requirements are now. The state is amending some of their Brown Act requirements that are effective January. And so now that's what's locked in my head. Uh, requirements that are effective January, and so now that's what's locked in my head, so. Um, that's really what we're looking for from, for you. And you like to keep them to the Tuesday at six thirty typically, so. I'm looking to you guys to give us some sense of availability.
It's next, is the, do you need like, are we expecting that we'll be ready to proceed with these items in two weeks?
May I first clarify with Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, council member out of town can.
For, for the reasons you provided me, yes, that would be truthful.
Thank you.
I will be out. Of town through. November twelfth, starting this Friday. And. I have a HW on my meeting on the thirteenth.
I'll make it happen.
Sorry?
I'll make it happen, whatever we choose.
And I will be out of town on November thirteenth and fourteenth. Possibly the, that Monday, but that. Can't, can't really hear you. I'm sorry. I said I will be out of town November thirteenth and fourteenth.
Okay.
Can I suggest that we look at um, the eighteenth of November and Elise, will you be here?
Yeah.
I will be on travel that day, travel back.
You traveled, you, so you, for some reason that you're returning on the fourteenth.
Uh, I, yeah, come back on the eighteenth.
Okay.
Thank you. Late.
So the twelfth won't work because um, or will, would the twelfth work for you?
I'll be traveling.
You'll be traveling on the twelfth?
And the twelfth is a Wednesday, it's not a Tuesday.
Right. I was just trying to. Rizzle something in there.
Yeah.
Well, I'm pretty, I don't have any plans to be out of town, so I'm basically available. Sorry?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be bad. Well, and we have. Two people not here on the eleventh anyway. Right?
Wait, who else is out on the eleventh?
So while you all like to meet on a Tuesday, should we be looking maybe at the nineteenth or twentieth? I mean, we do have Thanksgiving, which is on the twenty-seventh. And your regular meeting is gonna be on the twenty-fifth.
I'd say. Yes, on the nineteenth, but if we need to do this Thursday, as much as we don't like to do that, I don't know if you have any availability or if there's any. Anybody doesn't, but if there's anything that we can get off of our slate. This week, that would be ideal.
Oh, for this Thursday? We're not gonna be able to turn things around by this Thursday. That would be nice, but no. The nineteenth would work for me.
How do you turn this on?
Did it? So did we get disconnected again?
We did. We lost power.
We lost, okay.
So I'll get it up all the way.
Okay.
Sorry, that, that, so we figured it out?
Well, how, how soon are you expecting to be ready to proceed?
One item I'm uncertain about because there's some legal issues that we need to go through. With respect to the item pertaining to the budget, I just literally received the information this afternoon. So that means it's gonna take me more than a few days to plug it in. Um, so I. On a personal note, I was anticipating being able to do something this weekend and just like crank it out. My dad has decided to come up from San Diego, so my dad takes precedence. But I will turn it around as fast as I can and I'll do late nights, whatever, so.
You've also been on hold for a couple of months, so at this point you have to move on a little bit.
Uh, question for. I'll talk about that later.
Okay, the um, the current extension, what, does it expire today?
So we're gonna, uh, not quite today, but we'll take that up on that particular agenda.
Right.
So I'm just looking to schedule a, a meeting and if we take action. As uh, we'll, we'll be fine.
You guys got it?
I can do the nineteen.
Okay, nineteen?
I can do that.
Nineteen? You do the nineteenth?
It's not a Tuesday, it's a Wednesday, but.
It's fine.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not opposed to it.
Full three weeks away.
I, I mean, it's not ideal.
I was just trying to figure out if we, if there was any way to finagle it sooner.
Does the public wish to comment on the next uh, meeting date being a Wednesday or being the nineteenth of November?
So before you guys take action, let me see if we can get this. Thing up, otherwise neither one of us are paying attention for purposes of meetings.
The only other thing is that if I'm out. I mean, for the remote options, if we needed to meet earlier.
So under the remote options, you can attend remotely for just cause or emergency circumstances.
Okay.
If it's, you know.
Okay.
Leisure.
And just to confirm, if we pick the nineteenth and something urgent comes up, we could call a special meeting sooner. And still utilize the Zoom functionality or remote functionality.
So if a. A council member, even if they can't participate in, in vote. But they can be on Zoom and be observing the meeting.
They can observe as a member of the public, yes.
Okay, it looks like the only other option would be Monday, the tenth.
I'll still be out.
That's where I did, thank you.
Can you meet another night?
Well, yeah, she's gonna be out of town again.
Might just suggest that you all make an investment into your. Systems here.
Yeah.
Uh, would love to.
I think, yeah.
Think it was one of our suggestions.
You guys start a little earlier too than six thirty, since it'd be daylight savings by November something, right? Start at five thirty years, right after work.
I have suggested.
It's hard for some folks to go immediately from work to a meeting and then sit here for several hours, so.
Physically, because. We're not, I don't know yet. Um, so. We're gonna let this be.
Okay.
Um, because it's gonna suck up too much time, I think. Um, so for purposes of the notes, did you guys land on a tentative date?
I think the nineteenth.
Okay.
Which is a Wednesday.
That um, Wednesday, the nineteenth. Um, and what, what time?
I'm, uh, uh, regular time would be preferred probably. I mean, I can eat, I can meet as early as twenty, five thirty if necessary. It's just not ideal.
It's, it's, it's your discretion. Either way, it's fine.
I can't meet at five thirty.
Okay.
So keep it at six thirty.
Okay. November the nineteenth at six thirty. Do you need any, do you need a motion made or do?
Yes.
Just directions? Can we entertain a motion to select six thirty on November nineteenth as our next? Special meeting date?
So moved, second.
We have a motion by Skafani, seconded by Baylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it passes. All right, moving on to item number seven.
So here is where we are going to, we need um. Gary for this? No, okay. I'm gonna turn this over to Ryan.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is the item to approve a memorandum of understanding with HCD, the California Housing Community Development. Um, that was discussed um, around the time the council took action to adopt the housing element. Um, it was discussed then that in order to rectify some of the compliance issues and the implementation of. The adopted sixth cycle that HCD would prepare and submit to us. A memorandum of understanding in lieu of taking enforcement action. We received the copy. It took them some time to get it to us. I think we got it um, a week and a half ago or so. Um, and we've worked with um, outside council um. Um, at Downey Brand to help us review and really digest what was proposed to act by HCD.
This meeting is being recorded.
For the most part, it's a pretty simple MOU, um, but. Um, one of the sticking points, um, and the reason you don't have it before you tonight for approval. Um, is. A difference of opinion as to whether or not this memorandum of understanding should contractually obligate the city. To complete the seventh cycle. Within certain deadlines that are more aggressive than what would otherwise be required under statute. HCD has taken the position that. The city has not complied with the housing element laws for ten plus years. We didn't do a fifth. We've now done a sixth. The sixth took many, many years. Um, there's still some implementation measures to go through, and so they want to put us on a aggressive schedule. To complete the seventh cycle, which is the next cycle. Um, after consulting um, with our planner, um, outside council and Jill and I having some conversations. Um, we don't think that that's the right way to go about it. We don't think that obligating the city contractually. And exposing the city to enforcement fines for the seventh cycle is in the city's best interest right now. One, um, housing, um. Adoption of, of updated housing elements are expensive. Um, the city got. Um, hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants to just do the sixth cycle. Um, and I don't know yet if funding will be available for the seventh. Um, but the seventh cycle isn't due until July twenty twenty-seven. Um, and I don't see. A good justification at this point to contractually obligate us to perform it more quickly, um, with interim deadlines. So we are working with HCD. Um, we've gotten their latest draft back, um, just uh, yesterday, I believe, for Friday. Um, and they're pushing back on the seventh cycle. We'll push back. Um, and hopefully we can come to some type of. Uh, proposal that we can bring to you hopefully at November nineteenth meeting, which is one of the items uh, that we wanted to. Give some time in between tonight and the next meeting so that we can work through HCD's comments. Um. You know, they've got a, a bureaucracy that they need to go through for some of these red line revisions. Um, and so. We're a little bit more efficient in turning around drafts than they can be, so it may take some time. Um, but otherwise tonight's just an update, no action, um, because we don't have the draft agreement ready to, to be for you.
Great.
So, thank you very much for that, Ryan. And to be clear. This isn't a matter of months. This is a matter of ten years of being out of compliance that has driven us to this point.
At least.
That's important for the public to understand. It has been ten years. That we've been out of compliance.
And just to confirm, the pressure is being put on us because we took the grant funding to do the housing element or was it put on in general?
No, I mean, the pressure's being put on us because the sixth cycle is so far behind.
Okay.
And the fifth cycle wasn't done. Um, so what HCD is telling us is the city hasn't demonstrated a good track record of compliance and therefore they want to put some pressure on us contractually.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, we, we, we've got some. Um, good reasons why that may be a good idea. But puts us in, you know, a, a difficult position legally that we would be assuming. Um. That wouldn't otherwise be um, assumed if we were to just go through the seventh cycle in the normal course. I, I will say that in, in speaking with the consultants, HCD is being aggressive and plans to be aggressive with the seventh cycle. Uh, not just the Blue Lake, but across the state. Uh, so it is in our best interest to internally have our own. Calendar and benchmarks and milestones that we want to complete and put the budget resources to the seventh cycle. Um, but it's a bit premature to be able to contractually bind ourselves to certain deadlines. Um, when there's so much unknown, both from a funding, from arena allocation. Um, and, and a whole lot of other things that we're gonna need to work with consultants for. Um, including selecting a consultant to actually assist us through that process and that'll be something that comes to you probably. Um, late winter, early spring.
And just to confirm, Ryan, they stated they didn't have additional, a lot of funding to help us with the seventh cycle. It'd be all on us. Isn't that kind of what they were saying?
That, that's one of the things that we brought up with them. I mean, it, I was a little surprised. Um, in our interactions and how aggressive they have been, which really spoke to a level of frustration with the city that I certainly was not expecting. Um, so um, as, as we went through and certainly in the resolution, um, as they started identifying. Like those missed opportunities, if you will, I could better understand where the level of frustration was. So when we did meet, it was like, well. We really want to make sure that we're uh, set up to succeed moving forward. What kind of funding do you think you might have available? I mean, if you're, if you're asking us to commit to timeframes. Are you able to help us get there with some funding uh, commitments? They're not able to make that uh, at this juncture. There's gonna be a lot of entities throughout California that are in a similar um, state. And so we'll end up having to be, you know, competitive in putting forward a grant. And um, so we weren't able to like kind of move first in line, if you will, to secure funding, but they are aware. That the city is going to need some financial assistance. And so we're gonna take a look at a couple of different options that hopefully will come to you um, soon. But that is one of the reasons that we've been having this conversation about the seventh element. What happens if we commit to the seventh element, which is in a, under a more expedited and aggressive timeframe and you don't have the money?
Right.
You know, so um, we want to be mindful of not um, setting council up uh, in that degree, so we'll work with them.
Well, and it's not just the, the money it's gonna take to. To um, work through the housing element update. It's also the money, other infrastructure. Improvements that we're committed to performing once we've adopted the housing element. I understand we. We've recently committed ourselves to a half a million dollar improvement to our sewer. System bypassing the sixth house, cycle housing element, so. You know, and I don't know what, what might come forward with the seventh, but um. That's substantial, right?
Just out of curiosity, what were their sticking points um, previously timeline wise that they were frustrated about? Uh, HCD said they were frustrated with the city because.
Starting with the fact that you didn't adopt the fifth uh, housing element. And then um, there were a series of notices and that's in this resolution, which you are not to sign tonight.
Great.
That'll be the one that remains blank. Um, and it just walks through all the different timeframes and the noticing of when HCD provided notice to the, the city. Uh, where they were. And so it's, it's not a singular incident. It's been an iteration over years.
Great.
Would it be your recommendation, um, when we look at our budget now and like five years, ten years out as we're trying to forecast, fast forward? That perhaps some strategic planning with staff as we look at what would the cost be? What's the potential cost without funding? And then how we might be able to do that over time. So that would be one item. Any other suggestions? Want to reference for that?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for the public for comment. Does anyone wish to comment on this item? Let's go ahead, Scott.
Thank you. Scott Fraser, Blue Lake, Blue Lake Boulevard. I'd like to commend the council and your staff for taking serious consideration of these fiscal impacts. I think there've been too many times in the last three or four years that I've attended meetings. That that was not given the kind of serious consideration I see tonight. So thank you for looking at the fiscal impacts of accepting a contract that you might not be obligated to sign.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up to Zoom. Julie, go ahead.
Yes, good evening again, council. Um, I really concur with Scott's prior comment. Um. I also feel that in listening to other dialogues from other cities as they're um, dealing with their housing elements throughout the years. And especially like currently, um. Even at HCOG, you know, there was a lot going on with bringing in a representative from the state about um. Allocations that are gonna be hitting Humboldt this next, next year, and I feel that. Really given the stats that, you know, there's over like. A hundred and twenty-two cities like alone in like Southern California are small like us. They're part of the association of governments and they're not in compliance because they can't do it and they're starting to start. And in like charter cities seem like they have a little bit more of a leeway. They've actually had some legal action that's actually like. Protected them a little bit because like Elise said, our infrastructure is like huge. Protected them a little bit because like Elise said, our infrastructure is like huge and just. I understand we need housing. Everybody does, um. But we've got to do it in a way that it is quality of living and. And cutting people short without having that. So I think we might actually get some support from our other local cities in the way that. Even Natalie Royal brought this up, like we kind of, yeah, it's hard to like be a voice when everything's happening, but. We really should actually come together as a community, as a community of Humboldt and other regions and. You know, it can't be just like this broad umbrella for the entire state. That's unrealistic and just. As much as it might not get us anywhere, it really is unrealistic to have this broad umbrella of these, of these mandates and. I don't feel like anybody in our community was ever against, um. Uh, moving forward with our housing element. It was the process. Of how it was being presented that really slowed it down. And so. I think right now we have good advice from our staff and I think our council had great dialogue that. Um, I just appreciate having this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last call for public comment. All right. Bring it back to council, Jill. Sorry, you said we're just moving on.
Oh, so my, there, there's no action that's needed other than continuing this. Um, we'll just say continue it just in case we're not ready by the, uh, November meeting, but we'll continue this item to a future meeting.
Great. And this confirmed, we do not need a motion to continue.
I don't need a motion for that.
Okay. Moving on to item number eight, introduce and consider adopting urgency ordinance number five four eight, twenty twenty-five, authorizing the city council to act as a planning commission when a quorum cannot be obtained. Staff, would you like to fill us in on this one?
So this is actually going to be a tag team, uh, effort, if you will. Um, and I'm going to start by saying that. Um, there have been a couple of items that have come. I'm going to have you come up to the podium. Um, uh, there have been a couple of items that have been coming to the planning commission and because you've had a, uh. Fair quorum of three, um, there have been a couple of items, um, that have either not been able to be acted on in the case of a variance. Uh, because a planning commissioner had, um, a, a conflict of interest by virtue of how close they lived in proximity to the project. So obviously this is now posing a critical mass, uh, problem. This evening we received another, uh, notice of resignation from Jason. Is it? Pass? Catherine? Shay?
Shay.
Um, and, and basically it's, it's a time commitment and, um, you know, just kind of feeling like it's very difficult for him to be able to put his full self. Uh, into this, so, um. Not great. We did have two, um, applications go out the door, um, you know, but we have not yet received, uh, applications, um. From, uh, potential candidates. So we have, uh, flown, uh, the vacancies and. So I want to let you know just in terms of real time, you know, this, um. We, we put this forward to, you know, start being proactive in light of some stuff that we could see. We were not anticipating that we would see this resignation. But it, it's taking on even more of an urgency, if you will. So I want to let you know that. Um, Gary, maybe you want to pick up from there because you've been the one kind of, uh. Wading through some of the. Can't get a quorum to hold a meeting.
Yeah, exactly. Good evening, Gary, recent city planner. Um, so yeah, as, as Jill was explaining, I mean, this item came from, from staff, you know, we're, we're recommending this because. We were having trouble getting quorums, having trouble scheduling meetings. Um, we had conflicts that prevented the commission from acting on applications. And now basically we only have two commissioners because we've got another resignation. So. The urgency became more urgent, uh, today. Um, so yeah, there is a variance application. We were unable to tell that individual when the commission was going to be able to act on their item. Uh, because we only had two commissioners that could even vote on it. So that's unfair to them, obviously, um, to. Not even have a timeline for when their application can be reviewed. So we think it's important that. Uh, the council look at, uh, the potential options under state, uh, state law, basically to be able to take that role on. In the specific instances where you don't have a planning commission that can form a quorum to act on, say, development applications. Um, this resignation in particular, if I could just finish real quick, you know, also raises the question, um, we were going to have the housing element program H I fourteen. Go to the commission for recommendation. Um, I don't know if this urgency ordinance needs to contain any language. That's a question for the city attorney. In regards to general plan and zoning code amendments, in fact, there may not be recommendations as the code prescribes. Uh, from the planning commission that simply just goes straight to the city council. I mean, maybe because the council takes final action anyway. I don't know. Anyway, you can weigh in on that, but. Um, so yeah, just to, to make it clear, um, this is a recommendation from staff because of this current situation. Uh, that we're, we're encountering. So, uh, anyway, is there any questions, Joe?
I just wanted to make it clear that this is coming from staff. The council is not directing or asking to have this privilege.
Yeah, when, when I found out, uh, on that variance application that we weren't going to have a quorum and they weren't going to be able to act on it, I reached out to, uh, Russ Gans, you know, one of the city attorneys. I said, Russ, is there any exceptions to the conflict of interest rule? He said, there isn't. You guys need to get more commissioners on there. So knowing that that may not happen in the near future, it was like, okay, what can we do to, uh, allow the council to be able to act on these? Because we don't want applicants, you know, not knowing when their application can be heard by the city, so.
Another question. Jill, I just want to confirm, we have posted those open positions, correct? They have.
Yeah, those positions have been posted, yes.
Forty-five days, I think it is. Thanks.
I don't believe there is a requirement.
Yeah, not far from forty-five, but it's posted.
I don't believe there's a requirement for planning commission. I think, um. I've looked over that municipal code as a question on the website numerous times, and I can't find any minimum number of days. Um, that are required.
They've been, it's been posted with the vacancy of Elaine Hogan. We have not received any vacancies, any lanes vacancy precedes my presence here. And then with the most, um, uh, with the other individual who I'm suddenly having, I don't have a base to put to them. Um, so those have been posted. It's, uh, it's available on the website and, and whatnot, but I won't speak specific to dates.
Right. I'm just saying that, um. With all the other commissions, there's a stated thirty day minimum notice before we can appoint to a vacancy. But with the planning commission, there is no minimum notice. So at any time, at any time, we can, we can appoint to the planning commission. Anytime we have an applicant, we can.
It'd be great to get more folks on the.
Gary, any more information and?
You know, I, it's that simple, really. We, we need the city council to be able to act on these things in the absence of being able to form a quorum of the planning commission.
So would this, would you convene the council like on a Tuesday? Like, like we have our regular meetings, or would we join the planning commission on a Monday night kind of thing?
I mean, in my mind, I was thinking it would just go to your, your meetings. We would just schedule these items for your regular meetings.
So the planning commissioners wouldn't take part in that discussion?
I, I don't know why that was. It would be before the council.
It's just that they might have some. Some knowledge that, you know, because they've been hearing these sorts of things before.
Yeah, I mean, I would defer to the city attorney, to the appropriateness of that.
Ryan? Yeah, I mean, they wouldn't be acting in any official capacity. I mean, certainly you could invite them to provide comment. Um, but the action would be yours. Um, and so it'd come to you as a staff report with staff recommendations and you would take the vote in the first instance.
And just to confirm, there's no way for this to be abused in any way, shape or form, um, this, this agenda. I mean, I just want to make sure the council long term is not ones making those choices. I want to make sure. That we have to have a planning commission. I mean, isn't that?
You have, you have a planning commission. You should strive to fill your planning commission. Planning commerce, commission serves a vital role. Um, you are, as a council, you're ultimately responsible for the actions of the planning commission and. Decisions of the planning commission can be appealed to you. But yes, the, the ordinance does maintain, um, and have some language that. The city is encouraged and obligated to continue the recruitment effort so that you can have a properly functioning planning commission. Um, and with this resignation, it's all the more important.
Great.
I, I just want, this, this is going to require a strong staff, staff direction and legal oversight. There might still be conflicts of interest, given that the council lives within the city limits. And so we may need to re-recuse ourselves from action items, uh, and we may end up being in the same spot, uh, anyway. Um, I want to make sure that we're clear that the goal is to restore the functioning of the planning commission. And I would like if we are going to move forward, um. In order to make sure that we understand that this is a temporary solution, uh, include a sunset clause. In there, um, with wording of whatever date or. The placement of, um. Warring or acting to, uh, planning commission. I just feel very strongly that we need to send. We need to make sure that we're completely transparent about this and we need to make sure that the, uh, the intention behind this is. Has nothing to do with anything but trying to, uh, be able to get back to, uh, a whole. Planning commission process and following all of the same protocols, all of the same rules. And, uh, like I said, because we do live within the city limits, there may be some of those same conflicts of interest and recusals and et cetera, but.
And, and Ryan, at this point, there is no deadline for when this would end, I don't believe. Um, and the idea, honestly, there's a lot of jurisdictions that have it in their code that at any time the council.
At any time.
Fill this function. I would recommend that's what Blue Lake does.
So you're feeling like it's, it's, it would be like a, rather than a temporary thing, it would be something that would be a standard if. If such time comes along that we have this problem.
It's an urgency now because we need to take care of it now and we need to be able to act on these items. But I, you know, ultimately we would recommend that this be a permanent thing and many jurisdictions have that in their code. State law does allow that. Because similar situations may come up in the future. And we would have to, what, I guess, do another urgency ordinance. So I think it would be good to have it be permanently in the code that in the specific instances where a planning commission quorum cannot be obtained. For whatever reason, that the council would be able to act on those items.
Right. Sorry.
Oh, no, I'm.
Wanted to make sure, I mean, that the staff, understanding that there's an increased workload in addition to an increased length of meeting. Probably for this. Um, you know, just make sure that before we.
Yeah.
We just make sure. Don't want to put any added stuff on to the already taxed staffing situation, so.
Just like a, a scenario I thought of, like, could I potentially sit here and deny applicants from the planning commission and keep the planning commission? On ice, so to speak, and just have the city council continue running. That would be, that'd be a concern of mine that's like.
You, you mean if the council wanted to just act on everything and not even have a commission?
Yeah, I mean, essentially that could be abused like that and I want to make sure that.
Yeah, but that is not what's being proposed.
No, I know. I just want to make sure that that couldn't be done. Is there a way that we?
I, I believe jurisdictions can do that if they want, but, but that's not even close to.
No, I, I know that's not what you're proposing, but I want to make sure that in the language that can't happen.
Well, so the planning commission is established by the council.
Okay.
In our municipal code and is a subsidiary body to the council. Um, again, it's ultimately you, the council's delegation of certain powers and authorities to the planning commission that gives it its life and function. If you wanted to revisit, and I'm not suggesting you are, but if, if, if you wanted to revisit the elimination of a planning commission, that would be something that we need to look into. Um, which is not what you're suggesting.
What I'm suggesting, we're suggesting the opposite of.
You are, you, trust me, a- after a couple of, um, a, a couple of items, you're going to be asking. People to please join the planning committee. It, it, it's a heavy lift.
Uh, yeah.
Really?
Um, and so, you know, I, I do think it is worthwhile to maintain this as a standard part of the code. Um, because small cities do have issues filling quorums. Um, on things like the planning commission, which does require a significant amount of work. Um, and so, you know, we could consider putting a sunset clause on this. We could consider instead of a sunset. Some type of review of the necessity of it. But this is somewhat common, um. And, you know, it's clear that it can only be utilized when. There is a lack of a quorum due to vacancy, conflicts of interest or disqualifications.
I just want to say how much I support, um, you know, full, robust planning commission. And so if there's anyone out there or you know anyone, let's, you know, put it out there to all our friends and neighbors, how important it is because they fulfill a really important role in our community.
And, and I'll say, you know, in recent times, state law has put. Timelines on local jurisdictions obligations to process things through the planning department. Um, and so, you know, not in this particular instance with the variants, but there can be certain development applications that come to us. Where without a quorum of the planning commission, we can't meet the. Um, the streamlining provisions under state law. And so this would allow the council to fulfill those obligations as well.
Is there, um, are there any? Blended types where it would be a certain number of council mi- members to fill and that you could still have, be working with active planning?
No, um, eh, some, some jurisdictions set up where council member sits as a non-voting member of the planning commission. I don't recommend them. Um, but the two roles need to be separate because if it is a planning commission, their decision's appealable to the council and that would be the, the reason not to.
Okay.
If, one additional item, Michelle, you brought it up about potential conflicts for the council themselves and that kind of thing. That is something we do look at. Um, as we were considering this, we did ask, uh, city staff. It's like, okay, where do the council members live? So that we can look and see for any projects coming up, whether there's conflicts and be prepared to disclose that and things like that, and so.
If the council does assume the, um, that role. Does it still go through the same process where it comes back to the council and the formal council review, or is it just? Come forward to council once and then that's it?
It'll come to you.
What was that?
It'll come to you once.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So then, so then there is no appeal. There is no avenue for appeal then?
No, and this organs is clear that if the council takes up. A function of the planning commission, that decision is final.
Great. Any other questions or should I open it up to the public for comments? I'll go ahead and open up to the public for comment on this item. Does anyone wish to provide feedback? Yes, Adeline, go ahead.
Well, th- this is an interesting situation because earlier I spoke about my concern. With commissioners leaving commissions and, and now we're in this situation. And one thing I wanted to say is that, um, you know, being a city, we're really unique that we can have our own planning commission. As some of you know, I've been going to McKinleyville and they are, uh, attempting to incorporate. And one of the things that a district like McKinleyville cannot have is their own planning commission. So that makes us unique and that makes us important. And. The planning commission is one of those areas where it's very difficult to find people because you don't make a lot of friends. Sometimes you have to decide on people's property or what they want to do to their property. And it, it makes for a very difficult situation. Elaine Hogan was one of our best planning commissioners. I'm sorry when she left. And again, my concern is there's a lot of feelings among some of our commissioners. I don't know exactly why. Luckily, our public safety commission right now is a full, robust, five-member, uh, group. But there's other commissions I've been very concerned about. So, yes, we need people to step forward. It's not just coming to meetings, but it's also please step forward and find your way into helping city government function.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Yes, go ahead.
Scott Fraser, Blue Lake. I'm here to support the council this evening. As, uh, several of you are no doubt aware, there's been a lot of misinformation flying attached to emails recently. And there's obvious good reasons for this urgency ordinance. So I have faith in your good judgment. But I think we have to be aware and maybe actively try to, um. Disseminate corrections to some of the accusations and other manure that's been spread this week on emails.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes. Go ahead, Angela.
Um, Angela Dare, Blue Lake also. I just wanted to say thank you guys once again. Thank you, Jill, for stepping in and helping us do all of this. Um, definitely I feel the urgency too, especially since someone stepped down today. It sounds like I have complete and total trust in our council. They have been nothing but, um. Open, honest, uh, communicative. Um, they've dealt with so much, um. For instance. You know. Negative comments towards them, so, uh. I have faith that the positions will be filled accordingly. I hear we have some possible applicants already, so, um. I would move forward and you guys take the positions until we could fill the other positions. Thank you for all you guys are doing. I know it has been so much. It's been so much just being in the audience. I applaud you.
Thank you.
We hate to please.
Further public comment? Seeing none, uh Julie Christie, go ahead.
Yep, um, thank you, Angela. Beautiful words. I really concur. And Scott, definitely amen on your sentiments. Um, I did want to just point out again, being like, you know, trying to just be vigilant throughout our whole county because we're just one small aspect of a huger community. So that's why I always bring in like just kind of the 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 outside view in. But other municipalities, it's very common that they'll have something set up like this because it's very important to actually have this ordinance. And and I think we should have actually had it sooner than later because we actually were missing out on a lot of planning commissions like. Uh, twenty-three, you know, early twenty-four, we were missing a lot of planning commissions and that was. Um, you know, we we had a really great, I think, team all along, like right now, Court Prior. I think he's been doing a really great job. I watched last planning commission, um, wasn't able to be on Zoom, but I was able to watch it later. And I think we've actually got a really cool team and I think we are doing good uh to move forward with continuing to have a really awesome planning commission. Um, I don't think that's in jeopardy at all whatsoever, but it comes down to the reality check that sometimes we might have to have something on the table sooner than later. And you guys as council can always decide to postpone it even further. For more information and to refer back to staff and all that and town halls or whatever we need to do. And that's where I really feel confident with moving forward with this ordinance because I have faith in you guys that. If the public says we want a town hall, the public says we want information, council members say we want more information, we'll get it. And that's not been an option in the past, so definitely I think this is a smooth move. And I don't think there'll be any conflict of interest. Honestly, it's something we should have done already, so thank you for doing it tonight.
Thank you very much. All right, last call for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back to council for consideration. This roll call vote as well.
And I just um asked that as part of the motion, we indicate that the. Ordinance would be both introduced and adopted tonight and read by title only. So we can avoid having to read the whole ordinance out loud.
Is there, there's no, sorry, go ahead. You go ahead, Ken.
I'm just gonna make a motion.
Currently, there is no sunset in this. That's correct.
But it sounds like something that we really need to have in place for the just in case because it could happen again. That's my understanding, right? And that's a recommendation from our city planner. And multiple people, I think that that's reasonable, as long as all the same protocols are in place and there's no. Concerns about loss of transparency or proper process.
I just want to make sure the council does not want to set a sunset to this ordinance.
I'm comfortable with the recommendations of staff that we make it permanent. It just seems, it seems efficient to have it there for the just in cases and not have to go through this whole thing all over again. You know, just in case, you know, the next time that we have a full planning commission, but. You know, they all live in the same neighborhood and they all have to recuse themselves from from our variance requests, you know, and we'd have to go through this whole thing all over again.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Sounds like uh we're ready to potentially entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce and adopt by title only. Urgency ordinance number five four eight dash two oh two five. Authorizing the city council to temporarily perform the duties of the planning commission. In the event a quorum cannot be obtained in order to ensure continuity of land use decisions and compliance with statutory deadlines. Second.
Motion made by Napier, seconded by Louis Luso. All those in favor, say aye.
We actually need to.
I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, thank you. I said that earlier.
All good. We'll go ahead and begin. I'm sorry.
Bill before.
Okay, um, for purposes of the record, we will go ahead and um read the uh title. This is the urgency ordinance number five four eight. Um, hyphen twenty twenty-five. An urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake temporarily authorizing the city council to act as the planning commission. When the commission lacks a quorum. Now I get to go, council member, uh Napier.
Aye.
So Louis, backwards. So Watski.
Aye.
Stefan.
Aye.
And Bales.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. Thank you. John, you can sign that particular document.
Before we move on, and before we move on and everybody bails out, um, I just wanted to share um. Pertaining to this item, um, some of us saw the email that was disseminated, some of us didn't perhaps, but. I'm really glad that there are some newer faces in the audience tonight that folks decided to come down tonight to see for themselves. Um, what we're discussing, how we're discussing it, and what uh kind of consideration we put into our decisions. I wish there were more people that would come and see for themselves and not take the word of others mischaracterizing what's happening in this room. Um, and the intentions of the people sitting at this table. There's been a tremendous amount of damage done by those mischaracterizations. Um, and assumptions and passage of information from person to person, so I applaud all of you for coming tonight and seeing for yourselves and. Um, and being responsible about how we share information. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, Fire Risk Management Services, FRMS, special assignment fee. Discuss and provide direction on payment options.
This is a fun one. Um, huh, very painful, uh, but here we are. So, um, just as a little bit of background, um, the uh. City is a member of a joint powers authority called the Fire Risk Management Services. And my phone thinks I'm talking to her. Um. And in March of twenty seventeen, the Blue Lake City Council entered into a joint powers agreement. With an entity at that time that was called the Fire Districts Association of California Employment Benefit Authority. And the authority at that time was providing um health coverage, insurance coverage for employees primarily of fire districts. And about that time, they decided to expand and offer it to municipal uh entities. It was a self-funded insurance entity. And um, uh, in in, I think, you know, by and large, it it functions, you know, fairly well. Um, and at their meeting on May twenty-third of twenty twenty-three, the Blue Lake City Council approved a resolution which basically. Um, was approving an amended and restated joint powers authority to the newly named. Fire Risk Management Services. So basically, it was the same entity, they changed their name and they went through and um. Uh, had that joint powers authority restated and also provided uh council an opportunity to withdraw at that time, should they choose. Um. There were a couple of things that were really important in that amended and restated uh joint powers uh agreement. Primarily that um first, it required a minimum three-year uh minimum participation period. So you're gonna commit to three years providing that um insurance coverage uh participation. And that the uh a new provision that was placed in there that the uh. Fire Risk Management uh Services could impose an assessment. In order to collect fees because they're self-funded. If they were running in a deficit, they could claw back the money from their members, uh if you will. Um, in June of uh twenty twenty-five, uh the FRMS Board of Directors approved two different resolutions. Uh, one was to impose special assessments for fiscal year or calendar year, actually, uh twenty-four and twenty-five. Uh, for the medical benefits program because the fund was basically eleven million dollars in arrear. And so they looked out to all of their members, the cities who participated. So here on the North Coast, it was um the city of Blue Lake and the city of Ferndale. Uh, in addition to multiple fire districts throughout the state of California. And um, the second resolution that they approved at that meeting was to terminate the medical benefits, you know, program. So we basically got put on notice that the uh insurance that is provided to the employees will terminate effective December thirty-first um of this year. So, um. What we are looking at in terms of a fiscal impact is that um the city is uh being assessed a total of a little over eighty thousand dollars. Um, to pay back. It was about nineteen thousand nine hundred for twenty twenty-four and a little over sixty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-five. And they initially had a demand for full payment, uh like immediately, and of course, they. They passed this after the fiscal year that everybody was um approving. We are still working on our fiscal year. Uh, but it doesn't change the fact that they knew well in advance. They didn't announce it until after uh many of the entities that already passed. Uh, their fiscal year budgets and um. You know, so uh the the other piece, they they because they started receiving some, you know, pushback on it was to establish a. An eighteen-month uh repayment program. So. One of the things um that I want to make sure that, you know, folks know is, you know, the the city did receive notice, but you've had a lot of transitional. Um, you know, changes and I will simply say, um. When you hear Fire Risk Management Services, it's not intuitive in any way, shape, or form. So, um, uh. We did reach out immediately uh once I discovered this file. Um, to the executive director of the leadership changes that had occurred within the city. And asked for some backup information. How did we get here? You know, I need to understand um this piece. And then we've also um initiated requests from other insurance providers so that we can move forward with backfilling. Our uh employees with some um insurance coverage, ideally in such a way that it is um commensurate with the level of um insurance that they've received. As well as the cost that the city has um typically budgeted for this purpose. I'm doing my best. Um, I've got, um, I I don't think that we're gonna get there because quite frankly, as I've explained to a few of the um staff members. We all like to talk about the Cadillac of coverage. This was a Maserati of coverage. And that's the reason reason for eleven million dollars um in arrears. So, um. We went ahead and and made the first payment so that that way we are, you know, staying in compliance, and so we made a payment of a little over forty-four hundred dollars earlier this month. Um, but, you know, my recommendation is we move forward with an eighteen-month uh repayment schedule because we simply don't have the cash flow to pay off eighty thousand dollars in one fell swoop. By doing it over a period of um eighteen months, we're also able to straddle two fiscal years so we can minimize, you know, the pain to the city. This is not something that was expected. We're gonna have to be taking this up as the budgetary ad hoc committee uh for the payment. And I am working on um securing additional insurance coverage. That will come back to you guys. Um, you know, for action um on on that front, so I'm not here to talk about that this evening. Um, I'm wondering if Ryan might have anything else to add. It's a. Pretty robust report that you have. Um, but, you know, we do have this letter, and so I've prepared a letter. Um, for signature by the mayor, uh basically, you know. Letting them know that we're we're gonna pay this under protest and we expect that if uh they go through their process. And they identify that, oh, actually, it's it's less than eleven million dollars, then we make sure that we're able to capture, you know, what that balance is, you know, in a prorated way like they've got. Uh, so forward. Is there anything else that you would want to jump through?
No, I think that's that's a good summary. You know, these things are somewhat typical and self-funded insurance plans where the members. Have an obligation to respond to a capital call when the um fund falls below, um. For whatever reason, maybe it's a high number of claims, maybe it's a couple catastrophic claims that invoke stop loss. Um, you know, maybe it's mismanagement of claims, you just never know. Uh, but. Uh, you know, i- it's clear that recently this wasn't a very healthy fund. Um, and so as a member of this JPA, we have a contractual obligation to pay the assessment. Um, I think the protests that we're making are appropriate. Um, and um we can continue to monitor. Their boards um review and uh attempts to fund the shortfall, um to ensure that if the city is a. Uh, a proportional uh reimbursement for this capital call that we take advantage of.
And I I would add uh one thing. I mean, I'm I'm really hopeful that as council members. You will all continue to be involved with, you know, public service or even nonprofit service as well as members in the community. Note to self, when you are looking at self-insurance pools, you need to do a regular review of the claims. I think if the claim information had been circulated in a timely manner, maybe some of the, you know. Red flags starting to go up kind of allowed, um. And and it's not just the city of Blue Lake, it's all the members. I want to be really clear. It's all the members felt blindsided, you know, by this. And so it's it's more of that engagement that's necessary when we are looking at these kinds of pools. And so moving forward, take this experience and apply it to the future.
I wonder if it would have made a difference since this was um. The council accepted these new changes back in May of twenty twenty-three. Now we're not even three years later. By that time, this was, it was a three-year clause, a three-year minimum participation, so you're kind of locked down already.
Correct.
What, I I guess I don't know if this is a question for you or for Ryan. Um, but what could have been done to present, get, you know, to prevent having gotten into this contract where it sort of has this detonation trigger at the end?
You know, I don't know. Um. This fund was requiring, um, it appears, all of its members to meet minimum term. So that it had sufficient members to be able to support the claim, and that's not unusual. You know, i- i- it's it's always an evaluation when you're going through a self-funded medical plan. Um, as opposed to a general liability, which we have with CIRA, um, the continuing increase in the cost of healthcare.
For sure.
To this point where some of these become unsustainable. Um, and some employers are getting away from their own self-funded plans for that very reason. Um, and so, you know, as we approach a new um carrier for health insurance. You know, um, some of the bigger, more stable um insurers are probably your best bet. Um, you know, can self-funded plan, you've got to self-fund it. Um, and and right now, you know, we're making up for, I don't know what our claims were um during the policy period. But, you know, uh, they're assessing this on a proportional basis. Uh, and so this is, this unfortunately is our share.
And so you're saying that this is for a for a joint powers authority, um, it's common that all the members are vulnerable to this sort of a a clawback.
For a self-funded insurance JPA, yes. For most joint powers, you know, HWMA, other things, it's more of a service. Um, with reciprocal benefits for being a member. Um, here, they're funding claims and they need to have a guarantee that there'll be sufficient funds in order to pay the claims, so.
So, unless you're going with a different type of an insurance carrier, you're always gonna be vulnerable to that.
Unless you're going to a premium-based, typical insurer like your anthems. Um, i- i- if you join, if you create your own self-funded plan, or if you join a pool of self-funded plans, you've got to fund it. Um, and that may be if the premiums are estimated um and ultimately turn out to be insufficient. You know, you've got to, the members have to make up that difference.
Two questions. Um, I looked back at the agenda item from twenty twenty-three. There was no legal review on this.
Never seen it before.
Is that standard?
Not recommended.
Not recommended? Okay, I just, if I ask that.
As I'd like to see all contracts.
Great. And then you said this, sorry, one more question. And then you said this was the Maserati plan. Is that what? I just wanted to.
As I'm, as I'm going through and I am trying to find. As I'm, as I'm going through and I am trying to find comparable insurance plans, there's nothing on the market that will touch it.
Great.
And, and I'm, I'm hearing that from, you know, other, uh, providers as well. They're just like, this was a pretty amazing plan. It's kind of no wonder they had losses that they did, so.
Mayor Swatzky, to your point on legal review, I mean, this is a pretty standard self-funded JPA.
Okay.
You know, I, I, I don't think, other than, hey, council, if you agree to this, there may be a situation where you get a bill, um, because the plan can't fund its own liabilities. You know, I mean, this is, this is what you'd expect with a self-funded insurance pool, uh, JPA.
Can we show any questions? All right, do we? Go ahead and open up the public, and if we have no other questions for staff? Does the public wish to comment on this item? Yes, go ahead. Would you mind coming up to the mic?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, so it's, this sounds like the plan was kind of high-risk-ish.
I couldn't speak to.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the advantage was to having this plan versus.
I, 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 I actually can't speak to any of that. I, I went back and tried to find some, you know, information. The staff report, uh, at the time was, was pretty light. I didn't find any analyses or any other comparables. So I can't speak, uh, to what information was presented. I don't, I wouldn't expect you to remember, you know, but, um, you know, so I, I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
I mean, unfortunately, these are like some of the risks that are involved, uh, with things. It's just, uh, these are painful. It's a painful way to, to, to discover where we're at.
Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, how many, uh, staff members are we currently insuring?
So that's kind of a tricky question. It might be easier for me to say, how many staff members were we insuring as of, let's say, May? You had eight. Right now, we're doing six, because we have a vacancy for two, uh, full-time positions.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Last call for public comment? Seeing none, Jenny, short, go ahead.
I was just curious in comparison with the amount that's being paid under this assessment, what total amount of premiums were paid during that same time period?
That's a good question. And to be honest, I've got too many numbers floating through my head. Cause I've been looking at a number of the insurance, um, some, some comparable plans. I'm not going to be able to get there right now.
Page fifty-four, I don't know if this is what you're looking for, but on page fifty-four is provided by FRMS. It shows gross contributions of Blue Lake for twenty twenty-four as a hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and.
That would be about right. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Nice, nice. Pull that right up for the, the information.
Was it an assessment amount of nineteen?
Uh, I'm, we're ready to move. Uh, Julie Christie, go ahead.
Yep, thank you guys again. I really appreciate, um, on this agenda item, especially to just have that little bit of response back from staff that's totally warranted. Um, going back to previewing when this actually was brought forward in twenty-three, um, you know, I just feel like it was more of a discussion than more or less than an action item. We didn't really, I mean, it'd be great if staff could look back and maybe they were able to and actually find where there was a fiscal impact, um, within that agenda item that actually would have projected this, this, um, and that would have been obviously caught, um, to be honest, and discussed at that point in time, had it been available. But we're kind of where we're at, and I, I agree with the conversation that you guys had on the table earlier and how you want to move forward. Um, but I just feel like there was, it was a little bit, um, misunderstood, I think, originally too, and not really discussed in a way that we would look at other options and, and, and whatnot. And I know stuff evolved since then, having that coverage and, um, but yeah, just to keep forward with anything that's coming at us, always have that fiscal impact in the agenda item really helps just clarify stuff for us in decision-making. Thank you.
All right, last, um, I'm, do you mind if I finish up with the book?
Sorry.
I'm just going to finish up with the public really fast and bring it back to.
Sure, sure.
Uh, last call for public comment? Seeing none, let's bring it back to council for discussion. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, um, make note, I think that there's been a lot of comments made about our, um, the amount of money we're spending on legal, um, in the last few months, uh, criticisms, I should say. And, uh, I'm glad to have Ryan at the table and, um, wish that Ryan was at the table the night we decided to sign this thing. Because maybe, maybe some of that overview, um, and, uh, and recommendations could have led to a different outcome. So, um, even though legal is expensive, I think it's money well spent. I think that, um, that we're gaining, um, very valuable wisdom and guidance going forward. And hopefully going to make the, the right decisions with some of that information. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes.
Yeah, um, thanks to both of you, Jill and Ryan, for this. Um, and I really love that under protest. Whether it gets anywhere or not, I appreciate the sentiment on that. And it kind of brings me to a question again on policy, uh, whether it's just written policy or fiscal policy, or if it is something that we'd have an ordinance that, uh, you know, that there would be a process for contract review. It seems like quickly we could find ourselves, uh, in trouble if we don't avail ourselves of some of the expertise, such as legal. Do you have any suggestions or thoughts on that for policy and ordinance?
You know, I have a lot of thoughts about it. What, the, the question is how I want to organize my thoughts on it. I think as a, as a matter of good practice, when you have an item, which is an ordinance or a resolution or an MOU or an agreement, it is always prudent to have your general counsel put their eyes on it. They're going to be able to take a look as whether or not it is consistent with state law. Is it, you know, doing its best to protect, you know, you, their client? And, you know, in some cases, it's appropriate to have sunsets or, you know, maybe asking, where are they going with this particular change? You know? Could he have looked in his crystal ball and anticipated it with an amended and restated? I don't know, but maybe he would have said, maybe we can ask why they're wanting to put these things in there. And, um, you know, so there's just a, there's a sort of a different level of engagement. You know, I don't know that, uh, general counsel needs to see everything, but I do think that for those four things in particular, that should be part of the regular practice. It'd be a little bit of money on the front end, but you're going to save more money on the back end, when you have to try to figure out how to detangle things. And I'll, and I'll leave it there.
Great.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I just have, um, for the letter, when we get to that point, there is a typo. I'm sorry.
No, it's totally fine. It was a long week last week.
It's been a long week this week. It's the last paragraph, uh, no waiver or acceptance of FRMS's position.
Look at that.
Thank you.
Random. Yes, we, I will make sure that takes care of, sorry, dude, you're not going to be able to sign the letter tonight.
I'll come back into my office tomorrow after all. I mean, you just like crossed it out.
And mark.
It's a classy move. Yeah, they.
All right. Thank you for the catch.
Elise, any more comments?
Good. Thanks.
Carrie? All right. Do we wish to entertain a motion on this item?
We, we do need a motion. Oh, yeah, we need a motion, because basically, um, we basically want to confirm the eighteen-month, uh, installment payment and then authorizing the mayor to send off this, uh, formal letter of protest. And we will make a correction.
Great. Shame.
I would move that we authorize installment payments under protest, as stated. Do I need to read the whole thing?
Yes.
And authorize the mayor to sign the letter to FRMS.
We have a motion?
I said no. Michelle said yes.
Sorry, well, what's happening here? What's happening? We have a motion by Elise Cabani. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle Louis Luso. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed, hearing none, it passed. All right, move. Do you mind if we take a short break, everybody?
That'd be good.
Okay. We'll take a short, five-minute break.